Thank you. David, you care to lead the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our recognitions.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone here at Stephen's, especially the school being out, and we still get to see all these pretty little faces. You boys, have you had a game tonight?
Uh, we have practice.
You have practice? Okay. Okay, so we're going to start with their valedictorians. Are they here tonight? One, two, okay, we'll call. You will call out here and just come on down if you're a valedictorian, so we can congratulate you. Um, I see, I think, are you Evan Brown? Okay, so Evan Brown, I ran out and looked at pictures, so I would hope to recognize you. And Evan is with Council High School, and Ms. Cadence Jackson is Hurley High School. Congratulations. Valedictorians. Grundy in our Twin Valley is here. Do you want Tommy, do you want down here?
The principal probably is telling at Grundy.
Of course. Come on, fellas. This is historical, because we only have one more year of high schools, so get your pictures.
Mark, did you know your student at Grundy? I figure it's the principal's.
Thank you all for coming, and your picture's out in the front office. Congratulations on your hard work. Okay, rather than say all K-5 Science Fair winners, I'm just going to try to read through the names, because it may be all of you that will be coming to the front. So first of all, congratulations to the K-5 Science Fair winners, and a special shout out to the pharmacy school for hosting the event. They're always very gracious. Jason McGlaughlin, and he provides the judges, which are the pharmacy teachers. So we're very thankful, so K-5 County Science Fair winners. Zoe Stacy?
This is your expert.
Oh, good timing. They know this, Zoe. Danny Justice, Twin Valley Elementary Middle, sorry, I shouldn't have said the school, second place kindergarten. Byron Daly, Riverview, third place kindergarten. Blaine McPlannahan, Riverview. Okay. Lily Blakenship, Hurley Elementary Middle, honorable mention. Charlotte Miller, Riverview, first place. Kenzie Blakenship, Riverview, second place. Mala Deal, sorry about that, Ms. Sherry, Riverview, third place. Riley Charles. Eli Cochran, Riverview, first place. Levi Justice, Hurley Elementary Middle, second place. Amelia Stump, Riverview, third place. Riker Hibbits, Riverview, third place. Colin Stanley, Council Elementary, first place. Olivia Bradley, Riverview, second place. Jace Breeding, Council Elementary, third place. Okay. Canaan Owens, Council. Jenna Stanley, Twin Valley. Okay. Gavin Byers, okay. Riverview Peyton Owens, third place. Canaan Waters, Hurley Elementary Middle. Colton Kraus, Riverview, first place. Joe Yates, Twin Valley Elementary, second place. Jessa Lockhart, Council. Britten Rowe, Council. Okay. Jackson Boyd, Twin Valley. Ace Cochran, Riverview. Cale Savage, Riverview, first place. Emery Coleman, Twin Valley, second place. McKinley Perkins, Twin Valley Elementary, second grade. Ella Bradley, Riverview, third place. Bailey McPlannahan, Riverview, third place. Alex Daly, Riverview, honorable mention. And last but not least, Brayden Yates, Riverview, honorable mention. So y'all sign with the group here this afternoon.
Let me see your certificates. If you just like, one guy's gonna step up front, the big one's getting in the back. Y'all step forward, y'all come forward. I'm just like, come on. You're getting back your towel.
Did you all enjoy the science fair? Don't lean on the thing, stand up so they can see you guys real good. Stand up so they can see you good. Hey, parents, I just wanted to add that the professors at the pharmacy school brag on our students, how well they're prepared and are able to discuss their projects, so... They always brag on the behavior of our children.
All right, one more, guys. We're gonna go in, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna do basketball recognition. Cheyenna Davis. Logan Lester. Jay Vensel. Sophia Belcher. Landon Atkins, BDD Player of the Year, first team all region, and honorable mention all state. Maybe somebody will be up there with you shortly. Brayden White.
Tommy.
And Jacob Bray. They are in open gym. Tom, Tom, say it, Tommy.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
So next, we're gonna recognize students that participated in indoor track, and I'll begin with Riley Jackson, sixteen hundred meter, third place region, ninth place state. Lilly Porter. Logan Boyd. Trey Taylor. Sierra Lowry. Michaela Estet. Chelsea Wright. Ava Ward. Madison Lester.
I think we might. Mark, did you tell all the...
All we need to do is read them, notify.
Okay.
Okay. I thought we might have just had miscommunication or something. Do we have any students here to be recognized for art? Here, have you got an hour? Mary Savage, third place VSBA Elementary Art Competition, and the title of her art piece, "Call of Duty." Cheyenne Smith, first place VSBA Middle School Art Competition, Lakota Love. Okay, Zoe McGlaughlin. Okay, her title was Johnny Cash. Make sure you look at the pictures, you can have it all read. Kenya Diaz. Okay. Taylor Lester. Okay. Sophie Snead. Okay. Abigail Stacy. Yay, third place VSBA, first place art competition, Blast from the Past. Show your art. Show, hold your picture and let them see it too.
Let us see it.
Yes.
Let's see.
Congratulations, guys.
Oh, I love it.
Thanks for representing our county. I don't think, I don't think she should have been here. Any students here for speech and debate? Math contest, Southwest. Math competition? Benjamin Stevens. Abigail Gill, Jacob Bray. Okay, let's get, Ben and I do the... So get Lucas up here and everybody. Okay, so we've recognized valedictorians, but I think we had Lucas Boyd come in for Grundy High. Should we do another picture with the other two?
Yeah.
We did, okay. So we have Council, Grundy, and Hurley. Does, do the board members want to come down again? Sure. Come on down. Come on. Grundy gets two or three. You'll take them all, won't you, Lucas?
Where are you going?
Warm me up, I got my workout ready. Like I work out anyway.
We'll move on with our public comment section. Ms. Hart, would you like to go first?
Since that's personnel, shouldn't we put that in closed? She's gonna be talking about...
Okay, all right, we'll move that to closed session. Sanska update? We have Curtis.
I'm standing in for Tim to give an update on the new high school. Appreciate you having me. We got some pretty exciting photos and a video that the, a drone video that the CTE students done, but I'll start out with some of the work that's been accomplished and what's coming up in the near future. As you can see in the photo there, there's, you can actually see how, the size of the school now since it's out of the ground. So a little bit on progress, stormwater piping is, is being installed. The main water line has been installed, everything except for the vault and the, the main water meter. The second floor slab-on-deck concrete is, is in, is complete in areas B, C, and D, which is the middle of the building and the classroom wings. A lot of the mechanical, electrical plumbing, rough end above the ceilings on the first floor in the gym locker room area is underway. The masonry in the auditorium and the gym, the walls are going up, as you'll see in some of the pictures, and some on the second floor as well. Steel's going up over, you'll see some pictures here, kind of in the middle section of the building towards the classroom areas. And then the walls are being framed up on some of the areas of the building as well. What's coming up here in the near future, we're gonna finish the, the water line by installing the, the water meter, continue to work on the stormwater piping I mentioned earlier, complete the steel erection in the classroom wings of the building, and then we're gonna start working above the ceiling, putting in ductwork, plumbing, electrical, all those rough ends, and then continue the metal stud framing in other parts of the building, and then you'll start seeing the exterior metal stud framing, which will, that'll be holding brick at some point in the near future. Now we get to see some pictures. This is looking south, kind of towards the area D, which is the gym area. This is if you're looking west, so this is if you're looking towards the front of the school, gym. Areas on the, the left where the masonry walls are, all that steel is kind of the middle of the building, where the offices, admin, auditorium, cafeteria, classroom wings are off to the right. Shows you some of the masonry walls at the auditorium and the gym, how high they are. That's looking north in the gym. Be a nice gym. Auditorium, looking down into the, the auditorium from the control room will be, which will be at the back of the room, so you're looking down towards the stage area. This is the steel framing that's going up in the cafeteria area. As you can see, the ductwork is going in above ceilings, as well as we have electrical conduit and plumbing is gonna be going in soon. And then we got some photos, drone photos from the CTE program, which they're gonna show you a video here in a second, but this shows you the metal stud framing, so the walls are, are going up in the CTE wing area. This is an aerial. To your left, of course, is the, the gym, concession stand area, and you move to the auditorium to the right, to the classroom wings at the very end down there with Crane City. And you see, you have some really nice views. This is looking south from the bus parking lot towards the classroom wings, down, gym would be at the end. As you can see, the football stadium in front of the school, the pad to the left, that's the, the fieldhouse, the concrete pad that you see there. And then you'll have the baseball, softball, the sports to the left, that's all being graded out. And then I think we have a video, I'll turn over to Brayden. The CTE folks have done a great job with drone footage. It's pretty impressive.
It's an impressive campus.
It's impressive, yeah. Yep, so that's the auditorium in the middle. Start moving towards the cafeteria, kitchen areas, admin office areas. And as you continue to walk down that hallway, you get into the classroom wings, which are the end, which is where all that steel's going up right now. And towards the CTE spaces and classroom wings. It's hard to get it all in one picture. That's actually the road that's going around the school there. There you see the football stadium. And pretty soon you'll start seeing the sports fields in that area. I think that's it. Any questions?
Beautiful.
Thank you, Curtis.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving onward, closed session. I have a motion going closed session for...
Make motion, go in.
Tommy's second. Angie, you're first.
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
David, yes. I'm a yes.
As most of you know, my name is Sherri Fletcher, and today I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your emcee. I would like to thank all of you for attending today, and the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April 1977 flood in the La Vasa Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of 1981 and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the La Vasa and Tug Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section 202 of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by 1977 flood. Nonstructural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April 1977 flood, or the 1% annual flood, also known as the 100-year flood, whichever is greater. In 2019, the Buck... In 2019, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of 2019. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October the 27th, 2020, to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of 1981. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the tech center, but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January 2021, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the tech center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the 202 program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the tech center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of tech center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets 202 program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Mrs. Catherine Carver, Chief Real Estate Division of Great Lakes and Ohio River Division, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Shane Clem, Representative from Senior Mark Warner's Office. Laura Beavens, Representative from Senior Kane's Office. Cody Mumpower, Deputy District Director from Congressman Morgan Griffin. Tyler Lester, Representative from State Senator Todd Pillen's Office. And Tom Lester, Representative from the Virginia House of Delegates, Will Northfield. Our speakers for today will be Colonel Jason Putman, Shane Clem, Tyler Lester, Curtis Ellsworth, Craig Stiltner, and Angie McLennahan. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize members of Buchanan County Constitutional Offices, and we have Alan Boyd here for Sherri, Nikki Stiltner, Matt Pillen. Members of our Buchanan County Board of Supervisors. Craig Stiltner, Roger Byd. Members of the County IDA Board, Alicia Oakwin, Matt Pillen, I'm not sure if to volunteer, Kim Oakwin. And members of the Buchanan County School Board. I also want to thank some special people today, our coaches and teachers from each high school for bringing the vans and helping with the parking. We have students from each high school that was ushers today, thank you. And our Buchanan County Band. Our principals and central office staff, which has helped so diligently, and I couldn't have made it these past two days without my staff. They work hard, as well as all of the parents, students, and community members that are here today. So at this time, I would like for you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the National Anthem and the invocation. We will now be led in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance by our Eagle Scouts, Blake Brawls, and Brody Compton.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now be led in the singing of the National Anthem by the Buchanan County Band. Now we have Esper Nykry from Basset Church of Christ.
Dear God, we are glad that you are here. We are glad that you were present at each and every meeting in the past, and we pray and we are grateful that you, we know that you will be with us in the future. You're God, and you know the past, you're here now, and you're going to lead us into the future. We pray a special blessing upon this school, faculty, the staff, the leaders in our community. But most of all, we pray that out of this school will come students who will be great leaders in wherever you plant them. It's our prayer that every student that graduates from this school and all schools, that they will bloom wherever you plant them. But we pray, God, that you will continue to lead, guide, and direct, and we pray this prayer in the name of your Son, who is the same yesterday, today, and forever, Jesus. Amen.
Our first speaker today is Angie McLennahan, Buchanan County Public Schools School Board Chairperson.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to stand here today on behalf of my fellow board members in the Buchanan County Public Schools. This has been a long journey, and while I recognize that we still have a journey ahead of us, today's milestone groundbreaking for construction of the Southern Gap High School is exciting, and it puts us one step closer to the opening the doors of the vast and invaluable opportunities that we can offer to our youth. We are only here due to the hard work and long hours that consisted of many meetings, collaboration, and negotiations between many. It is that work that often goes unrecognized, but today, with many of those individuals here, agencies and departments being present and represented, I want to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for making this school a reality with your diligence and your perseverance. As we all know, this beautiful new facility will open so many doors for academics, sports, vocational trades, arts, and musical opportunities for our children. The ability to host events beyond our district will be an asset to our community as a whole. How proud we will be to be able to hold these events here and show off our beautiful mountains and the southern hospitality of our Buchanan County folks. The Buchanan County Schools' mission statement is, "Our Children, Our Future, Our Responsibility." I truly cannot think of a better representation of that statement than the collaborative efforts for Southern Gap High School. May we never take for granted this blessed opportunity that we have been given that's going to outlive us all for generations to come. Go Eagles!
Our second speaker for today will be Shane Clem from Senator Mark Warner's Office.
Thank you, Sherri, and I'll second that, go Eagles. I look forward to pulling for Southern Gap, except as my friend Tommy Krueger would say when they play the big R. That's all I have. I'm actually here, Senator Warner asked me to recognize one particular person. Took many people to get to this day. This individual is so responsive to our office, our multiple inquiries always got back to us in a timely manner, and that individual is retired Colonel Robert Peterson. So I want to read this letter from Senator Warner on your behalf. As committee gathers today for Buchanan County Public Schools groundbreaking for the consolidated high school, I'm pleased extending my appreciation for diligent work to bring this project to fruition. Civil servants like you are the backbone of our nation, dedicate themselves daily to ensure the American people can rely on their federal government. We are all indebted to you for your efforts as a project manager for the United States Army Corps of Engineers on the consolidated high school project. If you come up, I want to present something to you. I'm pleased to present you with an American flag that was flown over the United States Capitol. I hope it will display this flag in its official capacity as a reminder of its values, it represents in recognition of your commitment to serving our nation. On this important occasion, I'm pleased to join with dear family, friends, and colleagues in saluting your accomplishments and wishing you success in all your future endeavors. Sincerely, Mark Warner. Well, we appreciate you, we appreciate you. Thank you, guys.
And I'd just like to say, I'm truly humbled and honored, and I just want to personally thank the Board of Supervisors, Craig Horn, the School Board, Melanie Hibbert, and of course Sherri and Angie for bringing us across the finish line. So, yeah, this ceremony and this groundbreaking wouldn't have been possible without all of their hard work, so thank you, thank you.
Our third speaker for today will be Tyler Lester from Todd Pillen's Office.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Senator Todd Pillen. As a member of the Senate Finance and Senate Education Health Committees, one of Senator Pillen's top priorities is providing the resources and opportunities necessary that allow our region's students to thrive and succeed, and working with federal and local partners to ensure that happens across all levels. He extends his thanks to the local leadership here in Buchanan County, our federal legislative delegation, and the Army Corps of Engineers for all the hard work and tough decisions that have had to be made along the way to get to this day. Much like your neighbors across the mountain in Dickinson County when Bridgeview High School was completed, this school here at Southern Gap will be the envy of Southwest Virginia, providing a state-of-the-art facility that our students deserve to learn in, experience, and prepare for their futures. As construction moves forward, Senator Pillen stands ready to assist in any way that he can, and third time's the charm, go Eagles!
Our fourth speaker will be Colonel Jason Putman, Huntington District Office.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, friends, and family, thank you for being here and really appreciate you guys inviting us to share this with you. I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add to what was said earlier. This really is a special event. You did hear how we got here, hey, section 202 unfortunately came out of the 77 flood, maybe a sad event for a lot of the folks who either lived it, heard about it, saw it, felt it. But in some cases, good can come from that. And 202 is special, just like this part of the country. I tell my team, they're probably sick of me hearing it, I'm originally from Vermont. It's where I grew up, so this is not unlike where I grew up. Some of the challenges are the same, some of the issues are the same, so it feels a little bit like home. And one of the unique things that we get to do at the Corps sometimes, it doesn't always work out this way, and sometimes it takes us time to get to that point, but we get to do things that do make a significant impact. Everything from dealing with disasters and seeing people on their worst day ever to events like this, where the event that led us to this may not have been great, but this one is. And as we have talked about, this focus is really about education for the children, and that makes such a difference for them and our communities and our nation down the road. So I don't know that you can do much better than doing something for the education of children. So I really feel privileged to be here. I'm really happy because the colors are the same as my alma mater, West Point, so it makes it easy for me. If it had been blue and gold like Navy, I'd have no problem. But no, congratulations on an achievement, and I will say, please join me in a round of applause for your federal, state, and local elected representatives that worked extremely hard through all of this to make sure that this got done. Their team's on a daily basis. And again, I don't know that I can say go Eagles, because it's really bad. I guess I just did, right? But congratulations, good luck, obviously, we've still got some steps to go, but this is where you start, so thank you.
Next speaker will be Curtis Ellsworth from Skanska.
Not sure who put me after the Colonel. Good afternoon, everybody. What a significant day for Buchanan County. Being from here, I know how important this project is. I've been the project manager on this project for several years, through planning, design, and now you can see construction. But there's been a lot of people involved and a lot of effort been put forth, and so we want to recognize some of those people today that's really been working behind the scenes. And I'll start with the expanded Skanska team. We have with us Tim Burge, who will be our onsite inspector for the project. Jeff James, who's not with us today, who's been assisting in the project management responsibilities. And then we also have the team from Branch Builds, who's our design-build contractor on the project. We have Mr. Mike Howdechell here in the group on the stage. Mike is a senior project manager, has been great to work with on this project. We also have some other representative of Branch Builds team scattered around, I can see some of them. Mr. Jason Hoyle, who's president of Branch Builds, is with us today. We have Barton Austin, project executive. Kathy Underwood, who I've known for many, many, many years. A graduate of Grundy Senior High School, I believe, Mr. Doug Childress. We have business development, John Gardner. Senior Superintendent Jimmy Kenyon with the fancy hat. Travis Cooper, I'm not sure if he's with us today or not. He's not. Joe King, who'll be superintendent for Branch Builds. Joe King, who will be superintendent for Branch Builds. And then we also have our architects from VMDO Architects out of Charlottesville. They are being represented by Joe Solontano. And they have a slew of consultants and people that have been working on this project. I talk to them almost daily, but I'm going to recognize some of them today. Andres Pancekko, who's with us today. Brady Scott. Drew Fleming. I don't believe I've seen Kelly, but Kelly Callahan. Randy Livermore. As well as James Atkins, who cannot be here today. We also have a local firm who's our civil engineer on the project with Teratech, being represented by President Billy Campbell. Billy may be the one that's been involved in this project longer than me. And one other person in the back I see is Jessica Smelster with Envision, she's our furniture consultant. Excuse me, imagine a lot of planning goes around furniture. Quickly, and I'll be quiet, but there's a few other people I want to say special thanks to that put in tons of hours on this project. That would be Jack Compton, who's a school board member. Angie McClanahan, school board chair. We have Ben Street, legal counsel with Buchanan County Public School. And I think my new best friend is Sheri Fletcher, who we talk three or four times a day for the last, you know, year or so. So thank you all very much.
We have next Craig Stelter representing the Board of Supervisors.
I'm going to tell you a story, Mike. I know you're going to... For those of you that don't know, Mike Ruff is a diehard Jets fan. And he's sitting back here and he says, "You know Craig, the one thing you missed," and he said, "You missed a golden, we missed a golden opportunity to name that school right." We're thinking, he said, "There's, what else is at Southern Gap?" You know, I'm sitting here trying to think about what I'm going to say now, you know, I'm not worried about what else is here, you know? And he said, "Think about it, the Jets." And it goes to numps with the airport, right? So anyway, but you know, only Mike would be trying to figure out a way to get his New York Jets pushed into Buchanan County, right? We love you, Mike. But you know, I look around, I've been involved in Buchanan County for a long time, between coaching, politics, I see a lot of friends, and I'm a very emotional guy, I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I swear, I look around, I see this thing, and I mean, finally, I mean, man, I'm telling you, finally see it coming to pass. I mean, my daughter was in like the eighth grade when this thing first started happening. Craig Horn, the county administrator, and I, we talked about how our daughters was going to get to play basketball together at a new school, and you know, at Southern Gap, and it just never did happen, and then we start talking about it again, it kind of phases out, and then, you know, it starts getting a little snowball effect, and you know, finally we're, you know, we're ready to break ground. So I want to thank everybody. I mean, everybody that's had a hand in on this, I know there've been a lot of people mentioned, there's had to be somebody we've missed, I mean, between the core and the local and the state and the federal. So let's give these guys a hand one more time. Anybody, if you had a hand in on this, I mean, seriously, just give my hand to get this thing going. One thing, one thing I ask is that, you know, I brought up the thing about coaching, look back and see Coach Cooper and see several other coaches, Coach Compton back here sitting beside of me, and you know, in coaching, you know, the one thing that really makes a good team is unity. And for a team to click, you've got to come together. What makes a community come together, you know, is love. People can say what they want about Buchanan County, I've been around the world, I've been a lot of places, but I'm telling you, I always find my way right back here. I love Buchanan County, and I've said it for years, when it was Grundy High School, you cut me, I bleed blue and gold. If there's another team for Buchanan County playing that Grundy's not playing, you cut me, I bleed red and blue and white. I don't care, I bleed black and purple, as long as it's Buchanan County. But today, you cut me, I bleed black and gold. I'm diehard Southern Gap Eagles. I'm all about it, and I want you to bring that pride that you brought from Hurley, that you had at Hurley, that you had at Twin Valley, that we had at Grundy, bring it to Southern Gap, and let's go out and let's kick some butt, take names now, okay? Good thing. Love you guys.
It's a little difficult to follow after all of those. I just wanted to say some closing remarks to all of you today, that this day is not just about the groundbreaking, it's about building dreams, fostering opportunities, and laying the foundation for a brighter future for our kids. Southern Gap High School will not only be a place of academic excellence, but it will be a place for our kids to be creative, to be innovative, and to explore new passions and talents, and to grow as leaders of tomorrow. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of so many, many individuals that's made this day possible. Thank you for your commitment to our students. To the teachers and staff, thank you for your unwavering dedication to our students. It inspires us all. To the parents and community members, your support and involvement is invaluable, and we're deeply grateful for the trust that you place in us. So as we look forward to the future, this new school, Southern Gap High School, will be equipped with the state-of-the-art facilities, innovative technology, and flexible learning spaces that can meet all the diverse learning needs of all of our children. But our goal is to nurture not only the academics, but a sense of community. As Craig said, we have to be committed to ensuring that this school will reflect the diversity, and to get the communities together, and that so every child will have the opportunity to thrive. So as we break this ground today, let us also break barriers. Let us break the barriers of doubt, of fear, of the limitations that hold our students back. Let us build the bridge that will connect our students to their dreams, their future, and to each other. Together, we have that power. We have the power to create an environment where every student will succeed and our community will flourish. This groundbreaking ceremony marks the beginning of a new era in the education for our community, and I am thrilled to see what the future holds. So let us celebrate this milestone, not just for the building that's going to be built on this site, but for the countless lives that's going to be transformed within its walls. Together, we're building a legacy. We're building a legacy of hope and opportunity and success for generations to come. So now, what we've all been waiting for, I'm going to ask all of our distinguished guests to pick up a shovel, and we'll secure it in the dirt. So all of us, shovels are down here. Want the hard hat too? I forget about the hard hat. I told them I didn't want my hard hat, because they get upset. And I said, "I don't look at him hat." I'm going to get up, let you in. Okay, on the count of three, we'll start picking. One, two, three.
I'm doing different like nails, hair and learning all like big, great things about it.
I like learning about how important cyber security is like to everything just like with my video game passwords, like you're going to the store, how everything's just out there in a way. This is very interesting class and I love how in Popcorn Fridays.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy?
My favorite part?
Uh, doing impressions on some of my friends that take the same class.
Well, I love doing like anatomy and uh when we, well I, I don't know. I just like doing anatomy and stuff like that. It was fun.
My favorite part about the class is uh the fun activities and learning about law enforcement. Can't forget my favorite teacher, Brian.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy class?
Uh, my favorite part is getting here and building basically anything you want along with the people that are in here. It's like a supportive environment.
What's that part about your class?
Uh, probably just working on all these cards and helping my friends.
With drafting class, I like draw stuff and putting it up.
I like cooking because then you get to eat the food afterwards. So, that's pretty cool.
My favorite part is the skills and getting to go to the nursing home. I like the more hands-on instead of just having to do bookwork all the time.
What about they had greenhouse? I was like, okay, I'll take that. Uh, I did it for uh the row of plants from my great-grandmother who uh taught me how to take care of her garden and stuff.
I like art because it's what I want to do. I learned art from this excellent teacher. I was always raised, if you may watch him, he did a matter of raise, but I don't know, I just like the way I'm, I'm an artist, you know what I mean?
We are sixth grade from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
Mary P. Scott at Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 4D class Council Elementary.
We are family!
We are 4A from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 7B from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are first grade Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 2Y from Council Elementary Middle School.
We are family!
And we love our school mama!
And your same mama loves you.
We are family!
Hello, my name is Grayson Rice. I am a third grade student at Riverview Elementary Middle School. What I like most about our school is that it is fun and exciting place to learn. I'll and I like being with my friends. I really like my teachers. They help me learn new things.
My name is Winna Robertson. I am a third grade student at Riverview Elementary Middle School. I love my school. I love it because my teachers are the best. My school makes learning fun for me and my friends. My school also plans fun things for me and my friends to do.
Hi, my name is Joseph McCoy and I'm in the fifth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. At Riverview Elementary Middle School, the faculty and staff are supportive and encouraging. They work hard for their students to be successful. You'll also find a friendly atmosphere where students get along. It is a safe environment for learning. Riverview Elementary Middle School gives students many opportunities to be involved in activities during and after school. From athletics to academics, after-school programs provide a place where students can succeed outside the classroom. Riverview is home.
Hi, my name is Cage Church. I'm 12 years old and I'm in sixth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. Some reasons why I like my school are that the staff and students are very nice. I have a lot of great friends. I play baseball, football, basketball, and I'm on the academic team, the Lego Robotics Team, and the Robot Drone League Team.
My name is Virginia Van Dyke. I'm 12 years old and I'm in sixth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. I participated in our school's Robot Drone League and I'm a part of the academics team. And some of the things that I like about school is having all of the teachers here to help you whenever you need it. And having so many different after-school activities to participate in. And being able to just interact with so many different people.
Hi, my name is Timely Stilner. I'm in seventh grade. The best thing about Riverview is our people. We have wonderful students, teachers, administration, and support staff.
My name is Carter Deal and I'm in seventh grade. Riverview is the school that cares deeply about students' well-being, academic success, and personal growth.
I'm Underwood. I'm an eighth grader here at Riverview. And what I love most about Riverview is the faculty and staff.
My name is Remington Stacy. I'm in the eighth grade and uh some of the things I like about the school is the teachers. They're all very friendly and they're outgoing. The principals are great. And I just, I I really enjoy being able to come hang out with friends and just get through the school day and just have a good time. Um, I've always kind of enjoyed school, but this year it's really been great because all the teachers have been very friendly and all the staff and everybody. It's it's really a great school for kids to come to.
These are the things I like about school: math, art, and library.
I like recess and when we have fun math coloring pages. And when we have Christmas and Valentine's Day parties.
My favorite thing about school is coming and seeing my teachers and doing math.
What I love about my school is I love learning new things and getting to play outside with my friends. And the teachers always help me when I need help.
The thing I like about school is classwork, activities, science projects, recess, and loving on my teacher.
The thing I like about school is having friends. And I like going to PE and I like color reading.
My favorite things are library, music class, friends, and my teachers.
My favorite things to do at school is to do math and play outside.
My favorite thing at school is to play with my friends and to play outside and I like doing art.
About Riverview is we get to play on the playground.
My favorite thing about school is math.
I like um learning new stuff and um learning new numbers.
My favorite thing about school is seeing my friends.
My name is Olivia Lee. I love Riverview because the teachers are incredibly kind and learning there is a blast. They make learning engaging with fun rhymes and techniques. Riverview's exceptional staff, including teachers, counselors, and principals, make it an outstanding school. Plus, the variety of fun programs available make learning even more enjoyable. That's why Riverview holds a special place in my heart.
I love my school. I love my friends and their school is great.
One of the things I like about our school is the teachers because they're amazing.
I love my school because I get new opportunities every day and I get to learn new things. And I love how my staff members in the morning always say good morning to me and bring a smile to my face.
What I like about my school is the teachers, the staff, how the teachers make learning fun. I like to talk to my friends, play with my friends.
I love my school because I make new friends.
Governor Yonkin and the Virginia Department of Education has endorsed the All In Virginia Tutoring Plan. And they are taking action to ensure students get the academic support they need to recover from learning loss. The All In Virginia Tutoring Plan for Reading and Math is based on data from the SOL Spring 2023. This data indicated throughout Virginia, one in two students struggle in reading and two in three students struggle in math. All In Tutoring Virginia Plan will be implemented for grades kindergarten through eighth grade in reading and math before school, during the school day, and after school. Virginia Department of Education has developed a division playbook with program recommendations that is on our division website. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Sherry Fletcher, Division Superintendent, at 276-935-4551, or your child's school principal. Now, our school leaders will explain more about the All In Virginia Tutoring Program.
Tutoring is proven to be most effective when delivered in high doses five days a week and over a set period of time. We are committed to provide daily tutoring for all students in grades three through eight in reading and math and have incorporated high dosage tutoring within our daily instructional schedule.
We're all in!
Tutoring is most effective if operated in small groups of students. With a student-to-teacher ratio of 10 to 1, tutors can customize the teaching to accommodate each individual student's needs and skills students need to practice.
We're all in!
Tutors will use the Learning Acceleration Approach, where they connect gaps in learning to grade-level standards.
We're all in!
Hailing the content to the student's grade level ensures they receive appropriate support while fostering academic growth.
We're all in!
All In Tutoring is a high-intensity academic tutoring initiative built upon solid research. It aims to swiftly uplift our at-risk students to grade level, ensuring enhanced student engagement and improved grades across all classes.
We're all in!
We believe that by establishing and facilitating strong, positive relationships between tutors and students, we can increase student achievement and build confidence in the classroom.
We're all in!
Utilizing already-established digital progress monitoring will allow for personalized tutoring tailored to students' needs without additional extensive planning. This modality of progress monitoring will allow students to progress at their own pace, creating beneficial learning experiences for all students.
We're all in!
We must all work together to ensure students are engaged in school each day. Attendance matters.
We're all in!
With the additional resources provided by Governor Yonkin, along with our dedicated staff and the support from our community and parents, we can ensure our students demonstrate academic growth and success. We are all in.
All our fabulous students.
Grayson Hibbs, one of the best teachers ever.
Everybody's just been so welcoming to me, teachers and students. All the people here. I like the sports.
People.
I love the teachers. They're pretty cool, pretty chill.
Room 101.
They have good food.
Lonnie Webb.
Mark Cooper.
The teachers.
Our friends.
It's where kids come first.
All the people and the teachers make everything right here.
Probably the students.
Our union, our wonderful staff, and administrators make ground be great.
Specifically, Lonnie Webb, Keegan Bartley, Scotty Vostick, Megan Wolford, and most importantly, Mark Cooper!
Hello folks, my name is Steve Cole. I'm the Autobody Instructor here. Or everybody calls me the Old Dude for some odd reason. Must be the gray beard or whatever. Uh, we teach everything in Autobody from little bitty dings to great big kilns. Okay, we've got a Mustang here. Uh, it's ready to paint. Hopefully, we can get together and have some paint on it before long. Uh, we also do some custom painting. And I'll call your attention up here to our panels and plaques and things that we've done. We've done some airbrushing and pinstriping, things like that. Uh, just sort of to break it up a little bit. And no shop is complete without uh, of course, we've got Spiderman over here. And we've got Wile E. Coyote, which is just about hidden. Excuse me. You also have to have Bugs Bunny. Now, that's vitally important. And that's some of the things we've done here in the shop. And over here is our tool room. We have just about, and it's a mess right now. We've not organized very well with everything that's going on. We have just about every tool that you could imagine to do this type of work with. We actually do teach welding in here also. This is our welding station. Uh, we have our welders, cutters, everything that we need. Because, you know, if a car's wrecked and we have to, you know, cut out sections, you have to know how to weld to put them back together. So that's a, that's a big plus. And like I said, we do all the different stages of welding too. Uh, over here, we have our frame rack. No matter how bad a car is tore up, if it's worth fixing, we can stretch it back out and make it right and make it look like it just was never wrecked. And over this way. Uh, we've got a van here. Some of the students have painted. And like I said, we cover everything from the basic little dents to all the way uh complete finished paint jobs. And I'll take you into the paint booth next. We have a full setup down-drive paint booth with bake cycle. We can put a finish on a car just like you get from the factory. Uh, this does really good. It's well heated, it's safe, uh plenty of airflow. And of course, we have all our safety equipment and everything when we're painting. And uh we do all kinds of different paint work. We do just basic paint jobs. We'll do custom painting and uh and that's really the fun stuff. So, we'll go on out this way. And we also have been known to paint walls and things like this. Some of my students did this in their locker room. And just all kinds of stuff. We're, we generally have a big time. Uh, that's the nickel tour. Come on back when you can and come on in. I'll show you how to do some bodywork, paint some cars, and hopefully we'll have some fun as we learn. Thank you now.
Hi, my name's Rick Jackson. I'm the carpentry instructor here at Buckingham County Technology and Career Center. Uh, this is one of the projects that we uh have worked on here in the class. Uh, we've got a little tiny house out here that we're uh building. So, you know, uh, you can uh take this class to learn to read the prints. You can, you know, just learn to use the tools, the safety of it. Uh, you know, I'd be glad to have you in the class.
My name is Stephanie Mullins and I'm a CNA instructor here at the Career Center. And the CNA program is two semesters, uh so it's a full-year program. You can take it once you are 16 years old. So it's mainly for juniors and seniors, but if you're 16 in uh your 10th grade year, you are eligible for the program. The thing about being a nurse aide is besides being able to work part-time while you're in high school, you can also see if the medical field is right fit for you before you invest too much time. And also, you build up the career ladder. You can become a, after you get your CNA license, an LPN, a RN, physical therapy assistant, occupational therapy assistant. There's different careers in the medical field that you will use your CNA skills. At the Career Center here, uh with the CNA program, the first semester, we do a lot of medical terminology. So it helps you further on if you're going into any medical career. You also will do clinicals at our local nursing home. So you'll get to go and do a uh activities of daily living with the residents and get to meet and greet with them and uh do your skills. Or in the Career Center, they will pay for your boards if you have at least an 80 percentile. And you have to have an 80 percentile in order to be board-eligible. But they will pay for your boards. There's two sections, a written exam and a skills competency. And they will pay for it and we will provide you transportation as a group to go take your state boards. And you can become licensed while you're still in high school. And um you're guaranteed to get a job somewheres. Um, there is such a shortage of health professionals right now. They make really good money, uh especially for a young adult that's maybe wanting to um have a job, like I said, part-time while they're going on through school or going on to college. What I like about it is you get so much patient interaction as a nurse aide. Uh, and we learn, we get to work with our mannequins. We have uh vital sign equipment that we use to do uh vital signs with. We do range of motion, therapy skills, um assisting to welcome. So, uh it's a really good program and I would love to have uh anyone that's interested. They can contact me here at the Career Center or email me.
This class is going to get you ready for anything that you would want to do uh in cosmetology or barbering or nails or aesthetics. We do all of that. Everything in our textbook that we study every day. You can go to salon, whatever you go to salon and purchase, that's what we do. So after you come to the class for two full years, you're eligible to take boards. So what is boards? Well, we, and we have to have a license to do hair. We have to have a license to do anything that we do. You may want a cosmetology license, which certifies you to do everything. You may want to, just a nail You may want just a nail tech license that you can only do nails. You can get just a braiding license. You can get a license just to do waxing, any type of waxing. Whatever license that you choose, that you would like to do, you could specialize. But with a cosmetology license, you specialize in all of it. So after you take the two-year program, I get you ready for your state boards. And once you take your state boards, you're certified to do, and of course, you have to pass. And you certify, you were certified to do everything. It certifies you to do the nails, the skincare, aesthetics. It certifies you to do the waxing. It certifies you to do everything that there is to do in cosmetology. I have 100% pass rate every year. And the students, they took, um, and took their boards. They all took their boards. Everybody that went to boards passed. We had 100% pass. But this year, I was exceptionally proud of the children because of the fact that we went through this pandemic and we didn't know how they were going to do. But they came back in, we worked all summer long. We didn't get to go to boards until August. So once we got to boards, they took their written, they made 100%. They took their practical, they made 100%. So I'm very proud of the students. We do a lot of activities here in the classroom. We do a lot of hands-on. All of our hands-on that we do, uh, get you ready for the workplace. Also, we have a student organization. What we do is we compete with all the other schools in the ninth district. So this past year, we competed in March before we got pulled out of school because of COVID. And we had students that all placed, uh, first place in district contests and then I had one to place second. Last year, we went to nationals and I had a student that competed in nails and she finished fourth in the nation. Since I've been working here at the Career Center, I have, uh, students who have competed in the Skills USA in the state level. My students have won 20 gold medals. Also, I had 19, um, silver medals in the state and then I had seven bronze medals in the state of Virginia. So my kids do something right. Uh, if you want to learn and you really want to know how to work in this field and you want to make lots of money, you can because that's what we do. I get you ready to go to work. These are all my pins and I wear these pins very proudly. And my students won these pins. I didn't win them. But they worked really hard to be able to compete and go to state and win.
My name's Howard Fuller. I teach cybersecurity. Uh, you'll learn how to hack a, basically it's for hacking. Uh, for another known, there's two types of hackers. There's a white hat hacker and black hat hacker. Uh, the white hat hacker is what I teach. Uh, you want to learn how to crack passwords, learn how to use different operating systems that is used for PIN testing, uh, testing different, uh, operating systems. You can run baselines on networks, uh, just a variety of different techniques. Some techniques don't even require a computer such as social engineering. Uh, and we'll visit all these different types of techniques that will entail your start into cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is one of the largest growing fields that's available today for students and there's a lot of money involved in it. And about every industry you look at will require some type of, uh, security working.
Hi, I'm Stacy Griffith, a registered dental hygienist and the dental assisting instructor here at the Buchanan County Career and Technology Center. This course is a two semester course for ninth through 12th graders that will prepare you to work as a dental assistant. As you can see, we have state-of-the-art dental operatories where you will learn to assist a dentist with dental procedures such as fillings, crowns, and routine dental cleanings. You will also learn to take dental impressions, dental x-rays, and manage the front area of a dental practice. The national average salary of a dental assistant is $40,000 a year. So come enroll now and get your career started in the dental field with us.
Okay, my name's Mr. Sturgeon. I'd like to welcome you to the Horticulture and Greenhouse Plant Management Class here at the vocational school. What we do out here, we take plants and learn how to maintain them. We start off with, uh, fully mature plants, do cuttings, show you what part will grow, uh, get them to grow. So you see around the greenhouse here. And then at the end of the season, we sell to the public at a discount rate to try to cover our expenses. So if you're interested in learning about plants and how to maintain them and grow them, be sure to check us out here at the Buchanan County Technology Career Center.
This is the Practical Nursing Classroom and our program is a two-year program. The cool thing about our program is that high school seniors can start this program and then they could finish the second year of the program as an adult. When we complete the program, you have the opportunity to apply for Southwest Community College. And if you get accepted into their nursing program there, you could do the bridge program and have an RN degree in one year. So you can take two more semesters through Southwest. And well, actually, it's three semesters. You do a summer, um, conversion classes a few weeks and then it ends up being three semesters. But in three semesters, you can complete your RN degree with Southwest Community College by doing their bridge program. But our program is all-inclusive. You don't have to have any extra college classes. You take everything that you need here at this school for this program. And for high school seniors, the program is free. You don't have to have any, uh, costs and it's taught at a college level that you're not having to pay for. So that's another big plus for our program. We have excellent board pass rates. We have really successful students that complete this program and they are ready to go work in the medical field as a nurse when they graduate.
Hello, my name is Robin Ratler and I teach the Pharmacy Technician Program here at the Buchanan County Career Center. The Pharmacy Technician Program is a one-year program. It is open to Buchanan County students. It is preferred that you take this class as a senior because at the end of your senior year, you take a board exam. After you pass that board exam, you can go to work as a certified pharmacy technician in all 50 states. This class is also very helpful for anyone that is deciding to go into any type of medical field. And if you have any questions, contact me, the Technology Center, or your guidance council. Thank you.
Welcome to the Southern Gap High School groundbreaking ceremony. As most of you know, my name is Sherri Fletcher and today I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your MC. I would like to thank all of you for attending today. And the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April 1977 flood in the La Vasa Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of 1981 and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the La Vasa and Tug Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section 202 of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by 1977 flood. Non-structural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April 1977 flood or the 1% annual flood, also known as the 100-year flood, whichever is greater. In 2019, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of 2019. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October the 27th, 2020, to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of 1981. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the tech center but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January 2021, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the tech center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the 202 program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the tech center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of tech center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets 202 program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Mrs.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Can I have a motion to certify a closed session?
I'll make my certification.
Angie?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last month's meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, can I have a, a motion to pay our bills and approve our payables?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Tester?
Do we have money to pay our bills?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes, with the exception of Southern Gap.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Can I have a enrollment update?
In enrollment updates, we gained six students this month. We've got 2,188. Uh, they came from outer county.
Sign them up.
Council in Riverview, Box 3.
You say 2,188?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next, can I have a motion to approve our substitutes, volunteers, and coaches?
Motion.
Mike? Angie's second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Have a motion to approve retirements and resignations.
Motion.
Coach?
Second.
Mike's second. Any discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
David? Um, something I forgot as we were going along. Could we, we have any motions from closed session that we need to bring?
What was that number, Cur?
Change order number 6. 92,000.
I make a motion to approve change order number 6 to the building package, which is almost a $700,000 credit.
691-771.
Okay, so exactly.
Yep.
Have a second?
Second.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Sorry about that, got that. Uh, can I have a motion to approve our Title III, oh, sorry. In the head, our innovative insurance group.
That's our consolidated.
Our consolidated group for insurance.
Yes.
Motion.
Motion from Coach, second.
So yes, second.
Tommy? Any discussion? Angie?
I do have discussion. Who is this group?
That's their county.
That's the whole county.
Okay, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And have a motion for our Title III plan.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Angie? Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And motion to approve our Title I parent advisory committees.
Make a motion. We're all second.
Angie's second. Any discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
And I'm a yes.
Um, can I have a motion to approve the changes from the Virginia State, uh, Virginia School Board Association policies, being the first reading of policy code DF, DJF, EB, EBBA, EBBC, EBCB, FEA, GAB, IIBE, GBEB, GCB, GCD, A?
Option 2.
Option 2. GCE, GCG, GCL, GCPD, IGAG, IGAJ, IGBA. And the last one, IGBGA.
Motion to approve the first read.
I'll second for first read.
Any discussion there? Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, uh, motion for July 4th holiday?
It's for 12-month employees.
12-month employees, June 30th through July 4th.
I make a motion that we give them off. So dates.
I'll second.
Okay. Tommy made the motion. Ray's second. Any other discussion? Angie?
Exceptional mark.
Exceptional.
I'll second that.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, July work hours for 12-month employees.
Uh, some like to work four 10-hour days during the week, or the month of July. We usually.
Have we done that in the past?
We've done that in the past.
So it's four 10-hours, it's not changing the schedules?
No. And I'll make a motion.
And somebody's here every day, though.
Yes.
Everybody's not taking. Okay. I'll make that motion.
And then the schools, we ask that they do that, too.
Motion by Coach and a second by Mike. Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion for approval of remote area medical using Riverview Elementary School, October 17th, 18th, and 19th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
David's a motion.
And they want school closed on that Friday.
Okay, and we need to add that school closure on Friday to that. Is that okay, David?
Can we get our homecoming possibly on that day? So it's not two days out.
See, they changed the dates this year, too. For seven.
Is this forever for school closed or just Riverview and Grundy?
Riverview and Grundy is what we do.
Okay, we got a motion by David. Angie, you second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion for our Division Literacy Plan.
That's our reading program that moves Tester and Mike Hibbits works with K through 12, K through 8, and it's a state mandate.
Of October.
Motion.
Motion by Coach?
Second.
Second by Ray. Any other discussion on that? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion for our bid for our Transportation Physicals. Think we had one?
Yes, on all of these down through there, you only had one except the custodial and the BWB is the one that was the lower bid. You had two.
Okay.
But the rest of them, you only had one bid.
We're doing Transportation?
Transportation and Physicals, yep.
Motion.
So that's Buchanan?
Second.
Yeah, Buchanan General, I think, was the only one we had. Any other discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Fuel and oil bid?
Motion to accept the fuel and oil bid.
Second.
Tommy's second. Angie?
What was your motion? I couldn't hear you.
The fuel and oil bid, we had only one bid.
Okay, I'm a yes.
Tom? Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion for the grease trap pump and inspection bid.
We only got one for that.
Only got one.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David's, yeah, I'm a yes. And a motion for fire extinguisher inspection and service range hood cleaning and fire system bid.
Only one for that.
Only one.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And a motion for the custodial supply bid.
We had two and BWB was the.
Is that the one that we've had for years?
Yes, it is.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Second from Angie. Any other discussion? BWD?
Don't we typically approve the bid with lowest line item? Isn't that what we've done in the past?
Yes, and on the average, I think they were the lowest, but that's the one that.
Okay.
And they requested.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Was that the coal bid?
And the coal bid.
Okay. Mr. Truman, I have a motion to make.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the board of supervisors for the $279,000 for the pavement at Hurley Elementary Middle School.
We got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We still at, that is actually separate time. We need a motion for the coal bid.
Motion.
We only had one.
Only one.
Yeah, we only had one. Coach's motion, we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We didn't have any personnel.
Personally, I know we can watch.
Okay. Next meeting, Tom?
I can't do anything this week.
You're not?
I'll be on those weeks with Ethan.
I got the 21st.
From the 14th on, I'm good.
It would be nice to have it near the end where school will be starting.
The week you can do 14, too.
I can do that week.
Okay.
But Sherri's asking for what?
I thought it would probably be nice to have it near the end where school will be starting and there's some interviews we need to do.
I can do the 21st.
21st?
I can do the 21st.
21st?
21st. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right, meeting adjourned.